All right. As soon as we get the crowd under control, we can get started. Okay. It is 7:02. We are out of closed session. There are no actions to be taken. So, the next thing we have is the Pledge of Allegiance. So, why don't we all stand and we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance? Yes? I'm sorry. Oh, yeah. See, I'm getting ahead of myself. We've got to do roll call first to make sure we're all here so we can do the Pledge of Allegiance. So, you can stand for roll call.
Mr. Gentry? Mr. Garin?
Here and standing.
Mr. Troy?
Here.
Mr. Quagliano? Mrs. Melendi?
Here.
Mr. Fleck?
Here. Okay, now we're here.
Wait, no, there's still one more. I'm waiting for Mrs. Walker.
Mrs. Walker?
Okay. Now we're here. Okay.
Could we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The floor is yours.
Did you have any questions for me?
What's your favorite lunch?
Yeah.
Lunch is my favorite spot.
Do you know what we do here?
Thank you.
Okay. So, I think we're on to public comment. So, is there any public comment? Okay. Nina Vanderweel?
How's that?
Much better.
My name is Nina Vanderweel. I am a Crystal Lake resident. And I started with the American Heart Association back in December. And I'm here today to say thank you to Cheswick School and acknowledge that I work with the Youth Market Division, which is Jump Rope for Heart. And in front of you, you have some pictures from their school. I wanted to share with you what they did this year, which was pretty amazing. They raised $37,700 for the American Heart Association. And it's just, it's an amazing donation. And it did so much for the kids. And I just wanted to share with you some pictures that demonstrate just what the kids did. I think you can see who the PE teachers are, who we work with. And then the students take pledges on eating, you know, more fruits and vegetables and drinking less sugary drinks. And so, we're really teaching them the importance of, you know, being healthy and having a healthy heart, learning about community service, learning and, you know, raising money and, you know, just doing stuff for other people and helping people with sick and special hearts. So, I wanted to just show you the pictures because I think it just kind of demonstrates something really special that that school did. And then there was something else I wanted to tell you that all the, I work with probably over 150 schools. And I have never heard a school do this before. The day of their event, when the children celebrate and they're jumping rope and they're doing different activities, every year, the teachers create a video and it plays in the gymnasium. It's a huge video. And it's all of, it's their family members. It's special people that have been affected by heart disease. So, it could be a teacher. It could be the principal. It could be a student's uncle. It could be someone's friend. And it's just, it's very touching. So, I just wanted to acknowledge the school and just say thank you because it was, it's very amazing what they did. So, I want to say thank you and share it with you guys.
Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. All right. Moving on. We have, I'm sorry. These are new laptops and I keep thinking that the screens are not touchscreens. Okay. I guess we're on to revision and adoption of the agenda. So, let's go through here. Ms. Lombard, do you have a report? No? Okay, no report. Dr. Schlichter? You do have a report, okay? Mr. Zare?
No.
Okay, no report. Dr. Buzinski? Mr. Altmeier? Okay. Very good. Mr. Armstrong? It looks like you do. Okay. And Dr. Rowe, you have a report as well. Okay. So, and I don't have a report, so that'll come off as well. I would make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented with the removal of items eight, 10, 11, and 15. Is there a second? Second from Ms. Melendi? Okay. All those in favor say aye? Opposed? Okay, then motion carries. These glasses are no good either. Let's see. Let's start with Dr. Schlichter.
Okay, thank you. And I just, we've had a very, very busy summer in the curriculum department. I feel like it's a great thing. It just keeps getting busier and busier every year. And people see you and say, "Oh, did you have a great break?" And it's like, wow, it was kind of over before it began. But just to highlight a couple of things that were different this year that I think were really exciting. As you know, we've onboarded three new members in the curriculum department, directors that really came with a great wealth of experience. And just to let you know that those folks are hitting the ground running, literally jumping in from day one. And I was just so delighted and amazed to be sitting in a meeting and hear somebody jump right in and start facilitating and really have a high skill level. So, the department's really coming along. And I know you'll get a chance to get to know them a little bit better as we go along with some of their projects, but just wanted to update the board on that. And you'll see we have a couple of other updates. I'm not going to highlight all of them, but just very, very quickly. Our dual-language program, it was a, it was a lot of work over the summer. We ran the lottery. We finalized and worked on professional development for our teachers. And just super thrilled to be in the classrooms these last couple of days and actually see that, the result of the work with our students and parents coming in the door. It's just really, really exciting. And so, I know you'll hear further updates about that, but just wanted to highlight that as well as Vanguard Vision. So, we've got students in, it's sort of like this child that you've been growing here for a year. And all of a sudden, it's right there in front of us. And so, the teachers are really hitting the ground running. Students came in and one of the teachers, in talking to her, she, she had been a teacher of seniors primarily. And she said, "Well, one of my colleagues asked me, 'Is it different for you teaching freshmen?'" You know, because there's just such a developmental difference. And she said, "It's actually not because the way we're structured, these freshmen are, they are sitting in there, they're proud to be there, and they are really owning their own education from day one and behaving in that way." And she said, "It is just amazing to see." She said, "The kids are proud. They know they're special. They are just really excited to be a part of what we're building there." So, just wanted to do a quick update. There's a few more in the memo that you can take a glance at, but a lot of really good work happening to get ready for kids and teachers. So, just wanted to update the board on that. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to address them.
Any questions? All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. On to item 12. Mr. Altmeier?
Thank you very much. Just have two, two easy updates. The financial audit, the fieldwork for the financial audit was completed last week. All went very, very well. Debbie and her team did a great job preparing and finalizing and getting the auditors in and out, which is always a good thing. We have received all of their audit entries, standard entries that we typically receive every year. So, we will be presenting the board an executive summary, preliminary draft of the audit, or at least from a financial standpoint, at the next committee of the whole meeting. So, stay tuned on that. For the FY '19 budget, as you know, we have the budget hearing coming up at the committee of the whole meeting or the budget hearing meeting next month. And we are finalizing that as we go along. Over the last week, we did finalize the transportation claim. And good news on the transportation claim, well, it's good news, bad news. We are receiving a significant increase in the transportation claim over prior year, primarily driven by depreciation on buses. As you know, as the board knows, we have been purchasing anywhere from 13 to 15 buses a year for the last several years. And every time we do that, more, you know, there's an opportunity to recapture that depreciation on the transportation claim. So, as a result of increased transportation, as well as an increase, a significant increase in health insurance claims for individuals within the transportation department, we are seeing an increase in the transportation claim reimbursement. So, you will see that very large adjustment come through at the budget hearing. Just wanted to make the board aware of that.
Any questions on that? All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Altmeier. Okay. On to number 13. Mr. Armstrong, Community Relations and Student Outreach.
You have the FOIA report. Be happy to take any questions.
I'm sorry. Any questions on the FOIA requests or anything? All right. Pretty straightforward. Thank you very much. Okay, anything else? Mr. Armstrong, anything else? Okay.
All right. So, I get the great opportunity to talk about the kickoff to the school year and our first couple of days with students now. We welcomed our staff back on Monday with a brief presentation of all staff in the Performing Arts Center at the high school, as well as conducting our active shooter drills, which is an annual event in our school, an unfortunate one that we, that we have to take very seriously. But what I'm happy to report is, is that our, after our kickoff, we left with all staff just completely excited to be back in the buildings and really geared up for a positive start to the school year. On Wednesday, we welcomed our first through 12th graders back, was able to spend some time in each of the buildings throughout the course of the day. And everything went exceptionally well. All of the buildings had a, the positive vibe had continued. The flow of the day was controlled, was, was positive. Interactions with students, everyone seemed generally excited to be back. You kind of take for granted the kids and their inability to connect with their friends that they see at school during the summer. And we forget how, how important that social aspect is in the first day of school while kids from different neighborhoods who don't always get to interact, to come back with their friends at school. We obviously went through a major overhaul in the Cheswick Martin parking lot and a complete redesign. So, I spent the afternoon there watching dismissal. And of course, you know, there were bugs that were to be expected, but the design of the parking lot was phenomenal. It operated extremely smoothly. There are organizational tweaks that Mr. Rinkasik and Jessica with Transportation, as well as the principals are making with Mr. Dean, just to make it flow smoother. But the design itself, it made for a dramatic improvement in terms of flow, but more importantly, in terms of safety and cars operating in the parking lot, as well as students passing from parent drop-off in and out of the building. Finally, today, we welcomed our preschool and kindergartners back to, or to school for the first time, which was always a very exciting event with mixed emotions. We had tears. We had anxiety. We had nerves running throughout. More parents cried than kids. But even though it's, it can be a challenging and emotional day, it's a very exciting one as these students are beginning their journey through our school district. So, we've had an awesome start to the school year and they're just very excited for what lies ahead. Thanks.
Awesome. So, it sounds like a great start. Any comments on that? All right. Well, thank you. Moving on. Item 16. This is the consent agenda. Are there any items that need to be pulled off the consent agenda? Okay, hearing none. I will make a motion to adopt the consent agenda for all items that are on there. Is there a second? Second from Mr. Troy. This is a roll call.
Mr. Quagliano? Mr. Fleck?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Mr. Garin?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry? Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Okay, then motion carries. Now, we're flying through here. I think we're going to slow down a little bit. There are no items removed from the consent agenda, so we're on to action items, starting with 18.1, which is the strategic planning measures. Dr. Rowe?
All right. Thank you. So, at the, at the committee of the whole, we presented all of our measures and goals for the school year. And the one area that, that required this to be an action or an action item by itself was we didn't have the information on a slight change in how we were going to be measuring our LEP and IEP student growth. We're going with a projection model provided to us in ECR. Dr. Schlichter is going to explain that change and what we're presenting to you tonight for consideration.
Sure. So, just to start with, just a quick review of how we set that up. So, what ECRIS has now provided us, this is a new report that they're, that they are developing or they've developed for this year, is essentially looking at our student growth, which is reflected in those first two measures. And what they've done is they've said, based on these student subgroups and then based on what we project their growth to be for this year, here is what we project their achievement of the meets or exceeds benchmark to be. So, when you look at that, 22% in reading grades K-8 for students that have limited English proficiency, and you see those numbers going down. So, that number, that's the projected proficiency benchmark, is if they make their growth. So, that's the stretch. So, what we've basically done, and we hope to continue doing these in a way that's just very systematic, so it's not new every year, is to say, okay, with this report, whatever the projected benchmark is, we would like to meet it or exceed it. And if we meet it or exceed it, then we know that our students have made that growth and that our subgroup is increasing in the percent that meet that benchmark. So, that's the way that we'd like to approach those closing the gap goals. The last little piece is that in working with ECR, again, working with a consultant on their statistical model, what they found is that they were able to model all of our K-8 assessments to the park. So, that's why you have a K-8 reading in math. They were not able to roll everything together with PSAT and model it all the way to the SAT. So, what we wanted to do was to be really committed to having that K-12 focus, as we talked about before, and not leave the high school out. So, that's why we have a separate measure, or it's actually two, one in reading and one in math, for SAT or for the high school, simply because the statistical model, the way that they model those projections, can't model K-12 to SAT because that suite of assessments is so different than the park model. And so, again, this is a little different than what we showed you before because we didn't show you a separated high school one. But after working with them, they really assured us that the statistical model was a lot more solid in terms of being really valid and transparent for measuring growth. So, the sort of pattern that you see is that for our LEP students, is that sort of first block, there's four measures in there, one for K-8 reading, one for K-8 math, one for high school reading, one for high school math. Same thing down below for students with IEPs, same pattern. And the projected numbers that you see in there, which really are quite different from each other, are all based on what their projection is. And we want to meet and exceed, or exceed that projection. So, sort of a baseline explanation. I'll just take any questions or thoughts that the board has.
Does anybody have any questions on that? Does everybody understand that? Okay. Because it is different from what was presented at the COW. And it's just, there's really no way around it. It's the way it has to be. So...
If we want to include K-12, which I think we affirmed at the COW that we really, I think, all of us committed to, yeah, it was just necessary to add those two.
Okay. Understood. All right. With that being said, if there's no other discussion, are we, we're looking for approval of this, correct? Okay. So, I will make a motion to approve the strategic plan as amended and as presented tonight. Is there a second? Second from Ms. Melendi? All right. Any more discussion? There being none, let's have a roll call.
Mrs. Walker? Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Mr. Garin?
Yes.
Mr. Fleck?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano? Mr. Gentry? Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Okay. That motion carries. You're not the first one to say here when they're going to go with yes. And when you have to say the other way too. So... All right. We've got some supplemental purchase orders. We usually turn this over to Mr. Quagliano. I will pinch it for him. So, we've got, we've got the supplemental purchase orders as presented. What else we got? And accounts payable. I think we do this all in one motion. So, I will make a, is there any discussion on those? Okay. I will make a motion to approve the supplemental purchase orders in the amount listed in the agenda and the supplemental accounts payable in the amount listed in the agenda. Is there a second? Okay. Second from Ms. Walker? Okay. Roll call.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry? Mr. Quagliano? Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Garin?
Yes.
Mr. Fleck?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay. Do we have any more public comment? It's been 20 minutes, so if anybody else signed up. Okay. There being none, I will make a motion to adjourn at 7:23. Second from Mr. Troy. All those in favor, say aye? Aye. Opposed? We are adjourned. Okay.